But that's what it takes for me to be happy. Anyone else? Come on, Edna. I haven't talked to you for awhile.
I'll say something real quick.
Yes, sir.
Hey Slummer, I am Slummer Wholesale. And I too walked around the square. Daryl, I don't know where you got thirty-one people. Maybe you did, but I called you a couple of times and we communicated. But I walked around the square and I found exactly what Herb said. A lot of people said to me, "You know, I'm not gonna fight the city home." And to address what Brian, the Commissioner, says. I've known Brian Robinson since he was out tall. There's not a final person in this county than Brian and all the people on the Commission. I know they want to do what's right. We all want to. I've been uptown since nineteen eighty-one. I've got fourteen employees. And we're looking at either expanding and having to move off the square. And I've talked to two realtors who have told me that this will hurt my resale value. Now, these are people that are in the real estate business. They're not people that are speculating. These are people that sell real estate and told me that. And in my situation, Helen, you answered her question about, you know, you can, but we don't know. I was told by an architect, we want to do some things. We would like to take the front of our building and block it up for security reasons and for energy, and then paint the front and put some front windows on. Now, if I can be able to do that? You have to see the design. Well, I don't have time for that. I'm in business. I've got fourteen employees and I don't need you guys or anybody else telling me how to do business. George Bush told me, "Don't do taxes," and that was a lie. So stay out of our business. We pay property taxes and let us run our business. That's all I have to say. I don't tell you guys how to do your thing.
Come on, how are you doing?
You know, I'm in the light. But I still feel just like I have every time I've been here. I don't think you have a right to tell me what I can do with my building. And most people downtown aren't changing their building. It's been this way for a good bit. They be painting. Some of them have grants moving, but fun. But I, that actually, that's my home. I mean, I don't do a business. That's my home. That's where I live. And I don't, if you live somewhere and someone meant to tell you, "You can't do what you can't do," how would you feel? That's the way I look at it. Because it's my home. As long as I'm there, I want to do what I want to do. And I don't feel like anyone has a right to tell me how to do it. And if I need to do anything, we had a city planner go to two and talk about it. I'm sure she'd do about what's one, because no one's gonna go clear off the line. But I still think you don't have a right to tell me what to do with my building. And I've been there since nineteen seventy-six. And I have, I've painted the front and a few things like that. Made nothing in the past.
Poke it out so much.
Don't you like that?
They were nice.
Thank you. I thought they did too. And if you want to add some, you're welcome.
Okay. Can you tell me what color they would be?
Uh, they would purple. But like I said, I really don't see why we need someone to tell us what to do with our buildings. We paid the taxes. We've worked everything. And, you know, why should they kill us? We have city residents to do it.
You know, I'm not gonna say much more. I'll just say one thing. This downtown of Greensburg that we have known for years and years, if this is not passed, it is subject to change. The old Greensburg that you've known all your lives, you're saying no to it. I don't care about the looks of the downtown Greensburg. We don't care about keeping historic look of downtown Greensburg. And that's what the Council decided tonight based on your opinions. And I understand Mr. Slummer trying to prosper with his business. I understand that. And if that's what the Council so desires, to say we've washed our hands of downtown Greensburg, let everybody do to it as they please. As the business owners change and people from out of town come in and want to renovate the stores, tear it down, put something up that's one-story high instead of three stories next to them, I guess that would be their right. So that's what we decided tonight. We keep, try to maintain the downtown Greensburg look. And might get it for years and years to come. Or we say, "Okay, it's open to our zoning laws."
Like every other business in town. Yeah. Yeah. So we'll just be on equal footing?
Most businesses outside of town.
I mean, you make it sound like Mayor that we're gonna just come down there and tear everything up. If you don't pass this, the future of downtown Greensburg. I moved down there when there was nobody on my side of the square except Jeff Moore.
It will eventually be gone. It will eventually be gone, little by little. That's what's, what's gonna be decided tonight. When a building needs repair, let's just tear the front down, make it modern, reduce the stories, what have you. And, you know, most of us want to be dead, those old people, older people. And what do we really care? Do we want to leave something to our kids that we knew and appreciated? Or say, you know, based on money, we're gonna let it go? And that's really what it is. And I just don't say much, Slummer. I truly do. You're a businessman and you want to prosper. The buildings outside the square and two, three blocks away, businesses and on out to the edge of Greensburg, a lot of them are new buil-, new buildings. You know, their grandfather wore their hat. They can do what they want in that area.
I don't think by saying no, that's saying that we don't care about downtown Greensburg. I, I think before we voted on this, a lot of us voted on redoing Broadway. I think a lot of us care about downtown. I think that we're listening to the property owners and we're going by what the property owners say. So why is that, why is that saying that we don't want downtown prosper and we don't want downtown to look good?
What I, what I did, what did I just hear about that bill? Did I say that? I sure didn't. I want the people to prosper. No matter who they are on or surrounding the square or outside the city limits of Greensburg, I want everyone to prosper. The only thing I said was if there is no historic preservation, and that's up to you guys, and I will support that whatever you guys decide. What I am saying, this is the beginning of the end of the whole city of Greensburg as we have known it. And that's okay with me. I'll be gone. I'll be split under.
I mean, I think in a way too, it's also protecting the property owners from, you know, another, you know, neighboring, you know, building doing, doing something maybe way out of the ordinary. You know, I mean, it's, I think it protects property value as well.
Jean?
I am a governing owner and I would like to object as well. And the best way for businesses to prosper is less government interference. And another thing that hasn't been looked at is the structural integrity of the buildings. And so when you talk about it being gone, no, this, and you've all said, this has nothing to do with the interior of the buildings. So let's keep beautifying things, mandating things, not addressing the structural, and let's see how long it does last.
So Jean, we would be doing a situation like that. We are, like we're up two hundred blocks, Scott. Preserving that building. Hank?
I really didn't come here tonight with the intention of speaking, but I think, you know, I am, my name's Hank Martin and I am a business owner. I don't own a business in the downtown district or in the area that is proposed where they start our district. But I do use the downtown. I enjoy the atmosphere in the downtown. I'd like to remind you that you were elected for, to represent all the people of Greensburg. We are here not there representing strictly the business owners. I think the, the event that a few years ago that happened that really bothered me the most about, and really cemented my, my feelings that there should be something to protect the downtown, was that for several years it was a stopwatch sign that stood out there, a historic stopwatch sign. I think Oreos, I think they had that outside the front of their building. I mean, it's probably there for a hundred years. But because we do not have a historic preservation of a district, we don't have any protection, business owner was able to sell that or actually to trade it for work that he had done on his business for a sign. It's gone. People enjoyed it. People remembered it. It's in paintings of the downtown area. But because there is nothing to protect that, it, it was gone. So, I mean, I don't know what's to prevent people from saying, "Oh, the business is going a little bit badly. I'm going to sell off the architectural embellishments that have been on my building for a hundred, a hundred and fifty years." Because I can, basically. And I think that we could, we could really do have, we could have a downtown that was stripped of, of the things that make it a downtown. And I think that, you know, the other, the other people who enjoy the downtown, who are citizens of Greensburg and who you also represent, you know, are diminished if they can't, if we, if we disallow, if people, if we have this laissez-faire. Yeah, if you want to take off the top of your building or if you want to take off the facade and sell it, that's fine. You can do that. But, you know, I, I think, and that was the event that really cemented my belief that there should be some protection, because there's not. Anyone can sell off anything on their building. And there's nothing to protect it. And when it's gone, it's gone. At the end, that sign's never coming back. So that's all I have to say.
Joe?
I guess I'm not for this either.
Would you mind telling us who you are?
Yeah. Joe Shields. Daryl, I believe you mentioned a while ago that we had forty meetings that a lot of us didn't attend. And I was one of them that didn't attend forty meetings. And it was because there were forty meetings. So this, this does go on. Now, you, you mentioned that you want to see the downtown prosper and you want to see it survive. And remember back when, when I complained about parking? The city government didn't want to do anything about it, but they did increase their parking places by almost double up here at the old library behind there. Then you moved down here, made sure you had a big parking spot over there and here. But here you are, and by the way, the police station had three parking spots. Now it has forty-two. But the downtown, you've taken away parking spots from. By the way, in the last few weeks, and we're, we're keeping the downtown open, so everything's being changed on Broadway, which is okay. I mean, I have nothing to say about. I don't have a business downtown like that. But the thing is, if you'll look out in front of my building right now, not, I don't have a business there. But the building is missing a lot of its black marble, okay? In the last few days, because of the construction, the black marble has come off of it. I don't know how they're gonna replace it, but I'm, I'm sure you guys will take care of that. Right, Mayor? Oh, yeah. Go over and look. And besides two great big pieces missing, there's one great big piece that's cracked right through. And that's thick marble, real thick. Black, beautiful black marble. And it's, I know veneers has what they think is black marble, but it's plastic. This is the real stuff on this building. And it's, it's not looking too good. And of course, we're losing a few spots. But I, I'm against it. I'm against it because we're trying to survive downtown. Now, I'm, I just lived there, but I would kind of like to rent the building and it means more money than I made in the first twenty years of my business life, income just from having that thing rented. It's not rented. In fact, you can't even get to it right now, you know, because you people are wanting to help us. Okay? So, yeah, I'm against it. And no, no forty minutes. I'm sorry.
So we're learning, like, the last year tonight, doing improvements to downtown. Not good. That's what I'm hearing. Anyone else in the audience? Counsel? Don't have any more discussion than where they're taking the motion. This is what we make the big bucks.
You know, I mean, I think that this ordinance protects the business owners as much as it, you know, protects the downtown.
We have a number more here for the second, third quarters through the summer. We're gonna have a QuickBooks workshop, general marketing workshop, a business plan workshop, and how to launch your business workshop, which is just sort of a feasibility workshop essentially, should you move forward from this point. Just wanted to mention that Cutting Edge Sporting Goods received an Edge Award from the state Small Business Development Center for their expansion that they did. And we also have tried to work more closely with the other community organizations, Main Street, obviously the Chamber of Commerce, EDF, and... Work one.
Of these 41 clients that took counsel, you said there were only four that are starting a business. Are you still seeing the others, or what's happened if they've gone on the wayside? What's happened?
Yeah, generally, we see about 10% of our clients do either improve their existing business or start a business on their own. So part of what we do is, you know, we meet with individuals once, go over their plans, their progress, their really feasibility. And some people just aren't prepared, aren't ready to start a business, or it just doesn't make sense. I meet with a number of clients who maybe had questions on how can I find a grant, those things, where, you know, the answer generally is not there. So there's a lot of one, basically, one of the clients where you spend maybe an hour or two with them. And as their needs evolve, I absolutely keep working with individuals as it goes. You know, there's, I know I'm still meeting with individuals that I first started meeting last year, and one of those for sure will be a new business here in April. But for some of the larger projects, it takes a little bit longer, obviously, to come to fruition, so. But 10% is gonna be, you know, the general, especially for start, it's gonna be right on that 10%. And that's true statewide.
We asked for some numbers, and I appreciate this. Is this a better idea of what you're doing?
Yeah, absolutely. Like I said, I'm happy to come by. Quarterly is what makes no sense. April here was, you know, we had a really, really great April. But I can't tell you what May will be. You know, I can tell you April next week, and then I can come by in May and say, hey, it's fairly safe. The way things work, so. I mean, you can tell, you know, April by itself was 10 times what the entire first quarter was, so, you know, some of the projects take a little bit more time to come to fruition, so. But like I said, you know, I have to come quarterly, I'll go off, but I thought you guys know what's going on. And for clarification on the second, second half of the year's funding, when would you like us to come and sort of start that off?
We do that in January every year.
Well, we gave them the number, and we conditionally go into the second half. I think it's 5,000. We gave you 25,000.
Right.
He's wanting to know when he gets his compensation.
You know, I just wanna know when I just wanna know when I just come and start. Well, like, with the paperwork situation, I mean, I was, I got it to you a day late to get it. I don't want the same thing to happen.
How much have you been collecting so far?
With the, with this, I must have missed my error on the email, but I sent along the invoice as well.
So what is...
I can get that over to you tomorrow morning.
What's the council's pleasure?
We haven't given you any money?
Correct.
I thought you gave me 2,500.
You did, but we haven't received.
You have received.
Have you invoiced?
You don't give a bill.
As far as I know, our director did send it.
No, I do not have anything.
Again, the billing process, that part of it, I'm...
If they don't give me an invoice, they're not getting it.
Okay. You know, I will bring one of those.
I'm not going to leave here for a while. We're gonna try another day.
Oh, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. We'll wait till next Monday.
Flashing day.
You've done about 2,500 dollars, which you didn't send the bill at the end of the month.
The management operator would be, you know, once...
You said you have, I mean, this is, so how long would it take you to compile the second quarter numbers? So it'll be over in June or July meeting, or like, you know?
Yeah, it would be August before we have the finalized numbers.
Hey, maybe we just, June?
I mean, I can do what I did here, just kind of see the April numbers, I can give you sort of the pipeline.
Yeah.
And just give you a general idea of how the quarter's been.
Yeah, maybe in June, and then that way we can make an assessment.
I think this is a step in the right direction. I can curb the bill. Good stuff.
And again, all the job numbers there for the second half, for the half semi-annuals.
Anything else, council?
Thank you, Mayor.
Eric.
Eric.
That's when they prove the right change.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is Mr. Mark Kaufman, our new EDC director, with an update.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
I don't have anything tonight as interesting, maybe or as captivating as the historic preservation ordinance, but I would like to give you a little bit of an update here. This is my fifth Monday on the job with EDC. And I notice it rains every Monday in Greensburg. I did not bring that weather up from Chattanooga, Tennessee, I promise you that. And for the benefit of the farmers, I also promise it will not rain on every Monday forthcoming. Wouldn't it be great to have a job as a weather person where you could be right 60% of the time and get paid pretty well for that? But I'll drop that right now. What we're starting with the new Economic Development Corporation program is to update the, some of the materials that we have for aggressively marketing Greensburg and Decatur County. We're gonna start that step at a time. We're gonna work with the information packets, the folders that the information comes in, because as I was studying and researching this job, I saw that the information that we have with the county and the city, the Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development Corporation, Main Street, it's in pretty good shape. We just need to show people that we're working together, pulling together for the betterment of the community. And to do that, we can start with a folder that has the different logos of Main Street, Economic Development Corporation, Chamber of Commerce, city, county, and of course, Greensburg in the center of that with that, the great tree that you guys are all used to. I, as an outsider, when I came in, I had to see if it looked, as good as you get on the internet, it's great. So we're gonna, we're gonna put that on our folder to start our aggressive marketing. And we're doing that right now with a company that's helping us with that. Also, secondly, I want to start a very aggressive business expansion and retention program here in Greensburg, Decatur County. And it just makes good sense, because your healthy, existing, existing businesses, they create across the country 70 to 80% of all new jobs. It may be that your new recruitments make the sexy headlines, and that's great, a new recruitment is great, but it's less time consuming, it takes less money usually to work with a company that is expanding or that may be needing to leave. And as someone here in Greensburg told me, he said, you know, it's like business, it's like, when we were looking for a new customer, we don't wanna be courting them at our front door while the existing businesses or my existing customers are going out the back door. So that's why I want to start this, and we're working on it right now with the existing business services and our team. We're already visiting companies, we're already talking to them about how, what's good, what's good going on, or what do they need help with? What basically do they need help with? We were already making, or we're in the process of making a couple of loans from the revolving loan fund to help small business, and we're hoping that that will eventually help them to expand and certainly to stay in Greensburg, Decatur County. We're looking also at a business appreciation day in September, September the 13th, where we can show our existing businesses that we appreciate the jobs that they create here in Greensburg, the taxes that they pay, being the backbone of the community for helping, for helping provide the economic status that is here right now, and hopefully what we will do to help them grow their business. Third, in the recruitment area, for new business, I'm working on developing close relationships with Hoosier Energy, with Duke Energy, with the state, and the South Central, a very aggressive organization I've come to find around here, South Central Economic Development Group. And this will help, help us turn leads into newly recruited companies in this community. Finally, just as a little examples of some of the things that I'm doing, working with the Chamber of Commerce here to try to establish a new leadership Greensburg program to where the leaders of the community can come together once a month and see what good communities or what aggressive communities or progressive communities are doing, and how things work together, how all the utilities, the education, the governmental, that all work together to help, to help a community progress and to help a community with its up and coming leaders in Greensburg. So I hope that as we go along, that you'll invite me back frequently, so I can let you know what's going on and what great things are going on in the area of economic development in Greensburg, Decatur County. Thank you.
You're welcome every night.
Next item on the agenda is Valio Abatement. This, for five years, seven, three years, passed last month, Mr. Mike Lesko from Valio.
I'm the mayor, I'm the council. I've been invited to appear tonight, answer some questions for the council, which I'll be happy to do. The second thing I'd like to do is just, after I do that, is possibly give you some information on where Valio's gonna be tomorrow.
Sure.
Absolutely.
So do we have any questions regarding the abatements? Okay, I can take this off for, I want you to build, Ken. Last month, we passed an abatement for Valio, or we passed it three years, not five. And the reason the committee came up with three years instead of five, I'm not, I'm open to amend it if that's what the council wants to do, which I'm part of the abatement committee. But the reason I think that the council decided three years was tied maybe to equipment that is used a lot of times, good for design changes for a couple of years, or designs changed again, and you would ask for five years. And we have done that in the past without checking on the longevity of the piece of equipment that is being abated. And if we knew that this equipment is going to be in service for five years, that's another option. With the amount in the past, and we don't hold anybody to this, no one in the recent past has lived up to their part of the bargain on the amount of employees because of the economic situation, that's taken for granted. If, and something else, we, to give abatements, is to produce good jobs, not temporary jobs, sorry, I'm not sorry, but full-time people with benefits. You know, if all of these things can be proved, I would be willing to reconsider.
Okay, well, regarding the, we, I submitted three abatements to the council for approval, and the total of those abatements was 8,768,000. That Valio will be investing in machinery and equipment in the very near future. The first program was the Nissan program, okay, and the lifespan of that program is six years. Did you get these handouts I had sent down? There was a request for addition?
I don't know.
No? Yes, that one, okay. If you look at that, you can see the first program I'm talking about is Nissan, and the life of that program is gonna be six years, okay? The second program's Chrysler, and the life of that program's five years. And the last program is Ford, and the life of that program is seven years, okay? The investment in the Nissan's 2.6 million, in Chrysler, 3.9 million, and Ford, 2.3 million. The additional employees total 114 new jobs, 53 new jobs for the Nissan program, 46 new jobs for the Chrysler program, and 16 new jobs for the Ford program. Okay, so I think you can see that the machinery or equipment that is being purchased, okay, exceeds, is equal to or exceeds the five years of the abatements that Valio was asking for. And the new jobs being created total 114 new jobs. So I guess an answer to your question, Mayor?
No, it's on the agenda. The ones from last month that was passed, she, Jen's given me S B ones, June has the originals.
I don't have the originals. I've got copies. I've got the original resolutions.
The originals.
No, the resolutions are not originals. I have the original resolutions.
Okay, that's what she's gonna get a copy.
She's got the copies of those, and she's got the originals of the tax abatement.
As you see the history, Valio currently has 19 abatements, plus the three that were approved by council at the April 4th meeting. And was total 22. And this will be the last year of renewal on 14 of them. This is last year on 14 of those abatements. Which puts you down to eight then.
Yes.
So I guess these answers to questions that you had, are they going to be full-time permanent jobs with benefits? That's 114 jobs.
And how long is the equipment gonna be?
Average of six years.
Five, six, seven.
Five, six, and seven.
See, those things that we need to know. And something else that I would encourage the council and the tax benefit committee, and I think you will agree, if we give abatements, it's a bargain, you know, something that we agreed to, that one company has agreed to supply the jobs, and we agreed to give the abatements. And I know that if we didn't give the complete amount of abatements, we would hear from the companies. So what I'm recommending, and if Valio was sure that they can hold their part of the bargain and supply these jobs in the amount of time that they have agreed to, I would support five years.
All right, well, let me give you a little bit more information then, Mayor. Basically, Valio since 2005, okay, to this current year, has invested $53 million in the plant, okay, with an additional 30-some million, which will total through 2015, $89 million that Valio will be investing in machinery and equipment in the plant, okay? And this is on file with the state of Indiana, who applied for other tax incentives with them, okay? The employees, going back to the year 2000, Valio had employed 1,052 employees. That was during the heyday when there was, there were produced 17 million vehicles in North America, okay? That's, that dropped a little bit, and then, of course, the last couple of years, things have been very tough economically in the auto industry, but things are starting to turn around now, and recoveries are being made. Valio actually reported first quarter record profits for 2011, all right? But the, in 2000, the year 2000, as I said, the, was the high number of employees that we had was 1,052. 2010 was the low number, 427 employees. Current, so the yearly average since 2002, 2010 was 644 employees, and currently, we have 601 employees, okay? And that was as of February. One of the, one of the issues is that 178 of those employees are temporary, okay? And the reason for that is because of the economic uncertainty that has existed for the last year and a half, okay? We are currently in the process of making a transition of those temporary employees to permanent, okay? It won't be all at one time, but it is happening, okay? Then the other item I'd like to bring up is the, since 2005, the property taxes paid by Valio, okay? Since then, Valio's paid over $3 million in property taxes, while at the same time receiving abatements for some 20-plus abatements, okay, which believe me, are very instrumental, okay, in the decision-making that goes on, whether to invest more monies in different plants, okay, around the country. Valio's a very large company, they're global, they have 120 plants, 60,000 employees, and the market in North America is just growing, and that's why currently, we are slated, not counting the other numbers now, but through the year 2015, we'll be putting $39 million into this plant, okay? There, and that's why I come before the council, the three-year abatement's good, but the five-year abatement is really, that basically equalizes the investment against the tax benefit, okay? A three-year abatement on property, machinery, and equipment that is gonna be on the books for six years, puts us at a disadvantage, okay, as far as a benefit cost ratio. So I would ask the council to reconsider so that they match up the abatement with the, with the life of the equipment. I think if you look at our abatements in the past, which we report annually on, we've pretty much held up to our words on what we're gonna do.
Of these 72 that are temps now, how many of them are going to be permanent as the 114? Are these 114 additional to the 72 temps?
The 114 are additional.
And in addition, the 72 are gonna be made permanent also, full-time?
That was 172.
Okay, and there's going to be made in addition?
In steps, we're currently, I think the number is 50-some, that we are currently in the process of moving to permanent employees. So it'll be a step-by-step process. The, all 178 won't go to permanent in the next month or so.
You know, Mr. Lesko, I really appreciate Valio being a part of our community, and we're gonna go corporate, Mayor, I really do. And the city, I believe, has done most everything we can do. You know, we've abated equipment that came back from Mexico, everything we could do to help you. Valio retained jobs, if not increased, but tried to retain as much as possible. There've been difficult times, I understand that. And so what I'm hearing you say is, correct me if I'm wrong, that these temporaries are gonna be turned into full-time?
Permanent employees.
Yes, plus, you're gonna add the 114.
Yes. The 114 are associated with the...
No, not all ones, that's over, what?
Yeah, these are three different projects, and they'll be phased in through, over through the, I think it's December 2012.
Completion date here is 111, 2011.
January 2013.
This, this one here is 2011-6. Starting date is 7/1, 2011, completion date 11/1, 2011. When would those always be put in place?
Right, those dates that you're looking at there, Mayor, are the dates for to put the machinery and equipment and the lines in place, so it'll be shortly after, a month or so. But you can look, and for, again, I have the start of production date on that handout that I made, okay, that I supplied to the council. And the start of production date would be the date where the employees would start work. If not, maybe a month before then, there's necessary training and things like that that have to be done.
But most of them will be starting January, September. Most of them start at the beginning of next year.
Yes, yes.
And equipment will be in use for five-plus years?
I believe it's an average of six years, yes, minimum five years.
So what I'd like to ask the question, and I don't mean to put you in a rock and hard place, but when the renewal comes in, the first full year, and your manpower count will be up where you're telling us tonight that it will be?
I can't guarantee that, but I think if you look at, you know, we've had the history of abatements with you, and we report on them every year, and I think we've pretty much shot at our targets. And yes, we've worked well with the city of Greensburg, we appreciate everything they've done in as far as tax incentives and abatements, and, you know, I think Valio, on the other hand, has made a decision to invest a lot of money in this community.
And I'll tell you, there's 22 abatements right now, and I trust that you, as representative of Valio, will continue to support the city of Greensburg, because we want to support Valio.
And Valio wants to be here, it's a great workforce.
Committee like to reconsider to amend that to five years instead of three?
As far as I've been on the committee, I'd say it's simple, we abate the whole term with the equipment, do we?
We can, because it's, it's not just the models, what Mr. Lesko's telling you, Lesko, it's long-term equipment, it's part of lines that they will utilize in the future, correct?
That's correct. And if I can help answer your question, Valio's never had anything less than a five-year abatement granted by the city of Greensburg, and I spoke to the Indiana EOC director, and there haven't been any three-year abatements granted anywhere that he's aware of, they're all five-year.
In Indiana?
In Indiana.
We have, we have.
Well, I, I'm just going by what Trevor Lane had indicated to me.
And I think...
Maybe he's talking about bigger companies, I'm not sure.
I think our concern was on the type of equipment that it, because, you know, I used to work on move industry as well. You know, most times, every two years at least, we have design change, and the type of equipment you're using will change. Maybe not the line, but the particular equipment to manufacture that component or that part.
Yeah, there's always changing, changes that dies.
But the lines don't change.
The lines, no, the lines don't change, and like this, in this case, it's new business, so these are new lines coming in. So, these are new lines coming in.
I would be in favor to amend it. I mean, the economy seems, if you have known statistics, that the economy is improving. Therefore, with new business, hopefully Valio will be able to do what they have promised to do on the SB ones.
Let me give you one more statistic or several more. These 114 jobs over the next five years will put $32 million into this community, okay? The, even with the abatement, it'll be an additional $518,000 in property taxes. And the difference between the five-year abatement and the three-year abatement is only $62,000, okay? That the city of Greensburg will be granting a tax abatement to Valio. When you look at the numbers, $39 million that we're investing in machinery and equipment. You look at the payroll, that's $32 million over the next five years just for those additional jobs. To me, it's a small price, but it's still a huge incentive, okay, to Valio to continue to invest in the community.
I think this is information that we didn't have as a committee, and I think just the tax abatement committee needs to meet and then we can bring it back to the council at the next meeting.
And I really think in the future, Mr. Lesko would be very helpful to someone from Valio who attended the tax abatement committee meeting to explain any questions we may have.
I'd be more than happy to do that.
That way it won't take up your time again or ours as well for a second time.
Okay. And if there's any additional information that the committee needs, I'd be more than glad to supply that to them.
Is that okay? Will we discuss it again? Do you, would you like Mr. Lesko to attend?
Uh, it'd be no problem, I'd be more than happy to.